All right, call the meeting to order. I'll stand for the Fledge of Allegiance.
The Fledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Trustee Nierdowski. Trustee Keenley.
President.
Trustee Dante. Trustee May.
President.
Supervisor Bussie.
President. Trustee Dante did contact me. He said he wasn't able to make it because this week we switched the date of the special meeting, and he already had a meeting that he could not cancel as he's president of the Lions Club in Mount Prospect this year, and he was a per- he just couldn't miss that meeting. So, that's understandable. I'm not sure with trustee Nierdowski, but we do have a quorum. All right, so is there any public comment? No public comment. We'll just go to discussion and approval of a number of items here that we're trying to get sort of taken care of ahead of time in the next meeting when we have the final budget approved. It'll be a much easier, quicker meeting. You're also going to have a hearing. We come- you start 10 minutes before the meeting. Usually, there's maybe one or two people here, but there's not much discussion, and so it moves relatively quickly then into the regular meeting, and Dick will be chairing it. All right, so let's go into the items here for this evening. The first one is Resolution 2022-9, board meeting dates, proposed change to the date in July. I have to be honest, I screwed up. I asked Paul last month to change the August date to move it forward, and I really meant to say the July date. So, what we- I said, "Well, can we swap it back for July back and then, I mean, August back to what it was in July 40?" He said, "Well, why do that? Let's just see if everyone's okay with moving July forward." So, what this does is it moves the July meeting to the 17th from the, what is that, the 24th or whatever it was, and we'll just leave the August meeting where it is. Is there- I get a motion to approve, a second, then there's any discussion, we'll have discussion. So, I get a motion to approve?
Second.
Okay. Is there any discussion on this? Like I said, August and July are moved a week forward. It's not a problem in terms of us advertising, I mean, advertising, putting this information out so that the public knows, but just, I just want to make sure it's not a big problem for the board, so, in any case. Okay. If there's no discussion, roll call.
Trustee Keenley.
Aye.
Trustee May.
Aye.
Supervisor Bussie.
Aye. Okay. Second on the agenda is discussion approval of Policy Six, Service Animals Policy. This came about because Schaumburg ran into a little bit of a problem with an employee. I believe it's an employee bringing a pet in. We had had a draft of this done a couple of years ago by Jason Tremblay, our attorney. He- we went back to him and said, "Hey, this is the draft you'd given us a number of years ago. It appears that we need to have something on the books." So, he put this together, I mean, he took it, reviewed it, and came back with it. I don't know why we have miniature horses in here, but it must be, it must be required for some reason.
It is a thing, yeah.
Yeah, it must be required for some reason. I think the key points on here is basically the animals that are allowed in the building are service animals. We will not be asking them for proof. We'll be depending upon either they're wearing a vest or the individuals tell us, and we have to basically trust them. However, if there are issues according to the instructions, I mean, the policy of barking, wandering, displaying aggressive behavior, anything like that, they can ask to be removed then. So, this is pretty well limited to service animals, and there is a venue, or there is an out to have them removed if there are problems. And then, there's a special section, like I said, on miniature horses that I don't know why or what, but it's in here.
They were, they got them in gym shoes. Yeah.
Well, even airlines aren't allowing that anymore, from what I understand. They really cracked down, and it's why you see a service pig sitting next to you on the plane. I wouldn't be too excited about that.
Or a ferret, a bat.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, anyway, if you already had a time to skim it, our attorney did go through this, and I skimmed through it. I'm okay with it. It is a little bit bizarre in some ways, but it's based on precedent and state law. So, is there a, let's get a motion to approve, a second?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, is there any further discussion? Did you guys have a chance, anything that you want to address?
No.
No, okay. Roll call.
Trustee Keenley.
Aye.
Trustee May.
Aye.
Supervisor Bussie.
Aye. All right. That's an important one. That's the main reason we held this meeting. All right, now we go, the bid, invitation to bid. This is for the purchase of one of the, of a new bus. What we're doing is replacing our large bus, which was a special order bus, that no longer really meets our needs in terms of the things that it was built with or included in there, the equipment and so forth, and some of the bus drivers are, just don't like it that much. It also has 123,000 miles. We're beginning to deal with maintenance issues, and it was just felt that we have need for a different type bus, and it is time maybe to roll this over and get a new one. It was in this year's budget, this fiscal year's budget. We probably won't, I mean, if we go out the bid and then come back, we probably won't be purchasing it until next fiscal year, so it's in next fiscal year's budget, too. That money just will roll over. This is a, this is a bus that, the specs in here are rather specific in terms of Paul working with the bus drivers and our director of bus service, transportation services, specifically kind of what they need and how they need it. So, once we get this, we're going to be, I think, in a very good position with the four buses we have, and we are beginning, probably with next fiscal year being a capital, or establishing a capital improvement line item, where we'll begin reserving money for periodic replacements of buses, air conditioning, so we have a, we have a, we'll establish what we, what the schedule we expect to have for capital improvements, and we'll begin doing that, and the buses will be included in that. So, we will probably begin rolling these buses over at a certain age or point. So, this is the, this is the bid that we need to approve, that, for Paul to send out. The bids will come in, we'll have to meet the specification, be able to meet the specifications, and if they do, then we have to go, we're required by law to go with the lowest bid, unless there is some specific issue that comes to the forefront.
Lowest responsible.
Pardon?
Lowest responsible.
Yeah, lowest responsible. Lowest responsible, right. Is there, well, okay, let me get a motion to approve, then we'll have discussion. Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. Okay. Is there any discussion, any questions on this, particularly maybe for Paul, because he's been very, very heavily involved with this, with our, with Ellen?
We've talked about this before.
Pardon?
We've talked about this before.
Yeah, we did, yeah.
Obviously, in the budget, but also, a few years ago, we talked about revisiting all the buses.
Right, right. We were actually going to do this almost a year earlier, and we kind of drug it out. In this last year, we only put 5,000 miles on this bus, while the other ones did an average of 12, because it didn't meet our needs exactly, and also because we had maintenance issues we were constantly dealing with, so. I don't know what we'll do. We'll dispose of that bus. We've done a little pre-work, unlike the equipment for the, for the road and bridge, where we were able, where we have equipment that will, we've been able to sell, or we're selling. I don't know if anyone's going to take this bus because of the way it's configured and everything. We may have to go and park it in some, the village's parking lot or something like that. We'll just leave it out there.
In the middle of the night.
In the middle of the night. So, anyway, we got a motion and a second to approve the invitation to bid for the purchase of one bus for Elk Grove Township. Roll call.
Trustee Keenley.
Aye.
Trustee May.
Aye.
Supervisor Bussie.
Aye. All right, then, and this is part of the reasons I wanted to be here, if there's any discussion. I'm asking for the approval for a new part-time, there's two part-time, but we're doing the first one, is a new part-time position for youth services department. That's the assistant program director. I had been, Renee had been asking for this for some time. We had been, I had been delaying, Paul and I have been delaying this, because until we saw that the challenge course was going to be up and running, we didn't feel a need for a part-time. I do feel, once the challenge course is up and running, and given the fact that the demand from the schools for youth services, I mean, it's, it is ramping up probably for probably two reasons. One, the funding for these type of services in the schools is not particularly robust. And second of all, the other issue here is that there are just, we're dealing with more and more issues, whether it's drug abuse, whether it's violence, whether it's bullying, whether it's just down the line. So, you know, she's doing more and more seminars, and examples would be female empowerment, would be bullying, would be, they're doing another on, I'll cry, what's the other one? It's another one, a recent one, or something on violence protection, something along that way. Now, a lot of these sessions are with, some are teach the teachers, and some of them are with the kids, and those are in school. Then she has sessions here, too, sometime the same topic, but the one here, the parents bring them to the, to the, to the event. Okay, so, this would be a part-time employee. It's a, it'd be six hours a week. Pardon? No, I'm sorry. No, I'm sorry, yeah, 20 hours, 20 hours a week. 20 hours a week, and to be honest with you, I believe, and this is not necessarily who she has to, but I believe it would be her primary contractor she's using right now, Ed. I think some of you have met him at the, you've met him at the dinner, and he has been the one she primarily works with, and very familiar with us. So, he would be, would be a 20-hour, part-time employee.
Are they paid per hour?
How is the pay, is it per hour, or is it a flat fee?
Hour.
Yeah.
What's the rate? What's the rate, the hourly rate?
Forty-six.
And that's, that's competitive. I mean, that's within the range. Well, we'll always, when we look at salaries, we're always looking at the range, and if somebody starts getting out of the range, unless it's an extraordinarily high merit-based, we'll try to bring them back, back in. Yeah, so we want to stay, we want to stay in the middle to slightly up, and unless we have a real special situation where we don't necessarily want to be at the, at the high end. Okay, so is there, as you can see here, this is, this is the assistant program director specifications, and as I said, I think that the individual who meets this fairly well is Ed, but she will, she will go out and will solicit, will solicit names, and will be checking things out before she comes to us and says this is who you want to hire. I do do that now. I let the department heads make their decisions on who they hire, and then work with Paul to make sure that they're, they're vetted then by Paul, and then at that point, I will usually perfunctually give my blessing unless something really jumps out at me, because it's their department, their people, they have to live and die with them, and I just, Paul is my, is sort of the person that vets this, and then I just, I just take a general look and make sure it's not something that totally jumps out at me that I'm not comfortable with.
And the thing is, you said, we previously discussed it, this job will take place as of April 1 with the new budget.
Right.
Not until then.
Yeah. Okay. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. As Paul said, it will start April 1. By that time, they should be beginning the process of building the challenge course and the, and the bike safety. They will be starting in a supposedly a week with the bathrooms and the bike safety room, and then they'll start with the actual courses probably in early April sometime. So, hopefully, we'll have this set up, and he will just wash right in. Is there, you know, take, any further discussion? No, roll call.
Trustee Keenley.
Aye.
Trustee May.
Aye.
Supervisor Bussie.
Aye. All right, here's the second position. This is a full-time counseling therapist. I sat down with Luanne the other day, and she's running into difficulties meeting the demand. I think adding the psychiatric services has increased the, the demand for our services because it really broadens out what we do and makes it a more complete service and a more immediate-type service. So, her demand is expanding, and so we have a waiting list, and we have never had a waiting list. We've always been, been staffed to a point where we don't have to have, now, if it's one or two people, I know, but this has become more of a substantial waiting list, and we don't want to have a problem like we had with, with the psychiatric services at Kenneth Young. That's why we took it in-house. We don't want that problem to arise. It fits our budget. I have the, we have the ability to add another full-time therapist, so what I'd like to do is get approval from the board for her to go out and begin interviewing and, and looking for a therapist. Once again, preferably Spanish, but it doesn't have to be Spanish-speaking, but it would be nice. We have, right now, what we have is we have four therapists, three full-time, one part-time, two of the full-time are Spanish-speaking, and then, no, two of the, two of the, yeah, two of the, two are Spanish-speaking. Carmen and Karina are part-time, and then the two reg, full-time therapists are English and doesn't one of them speak Polish?
Luanne and Tanya only speak English.
Oh, that's right.
Carmen is the one that's been here for a while.
Right.
And then she speaks Spanish, and then Karina is the part-time.
Part-time, right.
And Luanne's looking for, it says in the job description here, a Spanish or Polish language for her.
Right. So, that, I mean, it's not hard-fast, but we'd like to get another Spanish, or if not that, a Polish-speaking, because those are the two predominant non-English languages spoken, and that we're seeing here as well, too. You can see the requirements, what she's looking for. This isn't easy to find, and that's why I would doubt that we'll have somebody immediately. This is going to take several months to find someone, maybe even longer. One, what is the salary?
There's a range that we put out there.
Okay.
Sixty, sixty, I don't know what to say there, I don't know.
It's public, public information.
Yeah, sixty-two to sixty-five.
Now, once again, that's.
Based on.
Experience.
Right.
And, and, yeah, based on experience and qualifications.
Would we consider hiring someone with just a four-year degree if we couldn't find someone with a master's degree?
I guess we would probably consider anything.
Yeah.
But these people are hard to come by, because Luanne's got a lot of contacts, so I'm hopeful that we get the hire in, but.
I mean, the only reason I-
I don't think she wouldn't interview or see that person, but they would have to really blow her out of her socks to not to go, to go, to go below what she feels are things that she needs here to provide the type of services that we need, given the type of people we're seeing, given the issues, the problems that we're seeing, the requirements she put down here really sort of lend themselves, lend themselves to that. Now, will she look outside the window if somebody comes in that's highly, you know, highly qualified but is missing one component, or just comes across to her as somebody that she would really want to have on her team? Yeah, I mean.
They need the licensing, too, though.
Yeah, yeah.
That's the other issue, yeah.
Yeah, we had, the part-time, we had a, we had arranged to get her relicensed, didn't we?
Yeah, her is expired, and she had to send in the paperwork, she had some continuing education credits that had to be finished at.
Right, right. So, in most cases, we don't want to have to do that unless.
We had two that are studying for the.
Right.
For the exam.
Right. We had two, two of the ones that got promoted internally.
No, Tanya coming in didn't have one.
Oh, that's right, that's right.
Carmen.
Carmen.
With us as a part-timer, not an LCSW, but another designation, and she's studying for the exam as well, so both of them should be hopefully passing that end of this year begin, I'm sorry, not the end of this year, sometime this year in the spring.
So, the bottom line is, is that for a full-time, she will look at, not your fully experienced, fully prepared. She's looking at the person and, and what experience they're bringing to the table, even if they're not fully certified in some ways. We can do that, provide that internally. That said, I know on the part-time one, she was a little more demanding in what she was looking for there, because she didn't want to spend, have to spend that type of time and money on a part-time. This is a full-time, so she would probably be flexible, but still, the least we have to deal with that, the more productive that person is right off the bat. That said, it's not easy to find people like this, so you've got to be able to be flexible. So, this is what, this is what we're looking for, but it's, it doesn't have to be hard-fast. And that, once again, that price range is, or that salary range is, is competitive, but once again, if somebody comes that's extraordinarily highly qualified and certified and everything else, and you, unless, say, she knows them, and goes, "Oh, I can't believe that she's, you know, oh," and we'll stretch if we have to, or, you know. Okay, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? Once again, this shouldn't fall, this shouldn't, this will probably not happen until the next fiscal year, and this reflects a demand issue, and once again, youth and family serfs, adult family counseling, youth service, and social security, or social services are the areas of primary growth for us that we, where the need is greatest, and we need to, we need to make sure we're on top of, of that need, and we don't start falling behind. Okay, if there's nothing else, can we get a roll call?
Trustee Keenley.
Aye.
Trustee May.
Aye.
Supervisor Bussie.
Aye. All right, then, the next is the, it's interesting that you mentioned that, is the tuition reimbursement program and agreement. Paul, can you just talk a little bit about that?
As far as what the history of it, or?
Yeah, what, what, why we're, why we're considering that at this time.
This, this document, this tuition reimbursement program and agreement. Sorry, I want to make sure you can hear.
Was done a number of years ago because there was a person in the township at the time that wanted to go for a master's degree, and this previous supervisor, we worked with the attorney and had this document done. The issue was at that time, though, is I think the board had some feelings about it, and the supervisor, just when he presented it, was it was for the general assistance area only, because he was the person that's, you know, was in charge of general assistance. So, it was presented in the way that it was that and not offered to the whole township. So, when George and I were discussing it, he said, "I'd like the board to look at this, you know, give us their opinions, and I'd like the approval to have it offered to anybody, any of the township employees." So, the things that are structured in there, it's, you know, various things as far as how the classes have to be within their, you know, line of work. They have the supervisors involved in the picking of the classes or assuring that those are correct, and then there's other things in there in regards to, they have to have a B in the class in order to get reimbursed, and then there's some, I think, some caveats in there regarding, if you don't get a B, you get less money toward, you know, reimbursement, et cetera. Yeah, it's here on page five.
Yeah, it's under five.
Item five.
What it is, is that they have to get approved for the course, and then if they obtain a minimum grade of a B or a, or a pass, well, let's say for a B, then they, and then they get that, they will get up to $1,000 for the approved course. If the approved course is a pass and a pass sale, that will reimburse up to 500. If it's not, if it's less than a B or a fail, the township will not reimburse that. If it's not, if the course is not subject to a grade or pass/fail, then we'll reimburse up to 250 for the approved class, subject to the production of a certificate of completion and attendance. So, it's 1,000 for a B or better, seven, 500 for a pass or better, and 250 if that's not the case, but within, but it's still approved by the supervisor, then, for, as a course they need to take, then we'll, up to 250. If, if they separate from the township, whether it's voluntary or involuntarily, at any time before the, before meeting all the eligibility and the other requirements necessary for the program, they will not, you know, get reimbursed for anything they've completed that, that they haven't submitted for, haven't properly submitted for. We do not have a, we do not have a component here where, I don't believe, well, we do, and any, any employee participating in the tuition reimbursement program is obligated for a period of one year beyond the last tuition reimbursement. If they resign or retire or discharge for cause, they have to reimburse the township for courses completed less than one year prior to the date of termination. So, after the last time, whatever the last contribution or reimbursement we give to them, they've got one year after that, they need to, need to remain, stay in, in the, in the township. If they leave before that for whatever those three reasons, then they have to reimburse us. So, I think this is for somebody, for somebody who's working on their masters, which is something that we, we're encouraging, for instance, for some of the, some of these positions, or for certificates, or whatever the case may be. We want to encourage them to do that. We want to support that, because that makes them more, more meaningful, more effective and, and better employees, better staff members. So, we want to encourage that. We're asking them as return that they have to stay one year, and they have to get the grades required for doing it. So, I don't think it's, I think this is, I think this is very workable, and it provides a, an encouragement for them to improve their, and after a year, if they leave, because they can find a better job or something else, well, you know, that's good. I mean, you know, from the military, you, you want your guys to get promoted. You want them to move forward. I mean, even though you lose that skill and experience, part of our job is to grow and make them, make them better and stronger within their field, and hopefully move on within, within township government or other forms of government to be just better servants of the taxpayer. So, yeah, it's for us, but it's also, it's also a way to help them. Is there, do we have a motion to approve this? Do they have a motion to approve or second?
Second.
Okay, is there any further discussion or any other questions you have, Paul or May? Okay.
I think this is just a comment. I think this helps with recruiting candidates also.
Yes.
I think it's, it's helpful to recruit candidates.
Yeah, we have something like this.
Yeah.
That's a very good point, yes, yes.
I think the dollar amount is sufficient, too. I mean, sometimes the programs, they include, you know, whatever the tuition is, half of it or something like that. But I think it's pretty appropriate, because I don't, I don't see anybody going to Harvard or anything.
No.
High tuition.
Yeah, yeah. I think a lot of, a lot of these courses will probably be taken, like at Oakden or at Harper or programs like that, yeah. Yeah. Okay, roll call.
Trustee Keenley.
Aye.
Trustee May.
Aye.
Supervisor Bussie.
Aye. Okay, just, last thing here is the, what do we got? The budget, I think we need to look at the tentative, the, I'm sorry, the tentative budget. As you know, you'll be doing the hearing at our, right before our regular meeting, and then after regular meeting, you will vote on the final vote. What I, what I have put before you, and the reason I did it here is because I wanted to get the changes out there, so you have any questions. First of all, the, the changes are the highlighted sections with the green. Utilities have changed, because what we decided to do is to allocate the utility cost based on square footage. So, the square footage of each department is therefore, takes whatever that square percentage of that square footage is in the building, their budget then covers that cost for the utilities. We also, there's some, also some minor changes to the agencies and some additions or adjustments. And then also, we've added in, in youth and adult family counseling, the potential new employees and the cost associated with that, which is salaries, FICA, IMRF, and insurance. So, that is the changes here. Now, what I'd like you guys to do, particularly when, when the final, when the final comes out, really go through that, go over line item by line item. I know a lot of this is the same. It doesn't change a lot. We have, we have come to understand what things cost and don't cost, so there are usually just capital items and things like that that are really making impact on the budget or not. But in any case, I think it's important for you guys to know what each department is spending and what they're spending it for, and, you know, what type of expenses they have, because that's your primary job. Your primary job is the oversight of the levies and, well, approving the levies and the budget, and then the oversight on audits. That's your primary. Secondary is the policies and the, and the resolutions regarding the operation of, the operation of the, of the township. But, you know, your positions used to be called auditors, actually, is what they were, But, you know, your positions used to be called auditors, actually, is what they were, not even trustees. Okay, can I get a motion to approve?
Yeah, this is for, this is for both, right? Both.
Yeah, for both, we'll take both. This is for both, the ordinance twenty twenty-three, one for the, for the, yeah, twenty-three, twenty-three, one.
You're not approving that here.
No, I'm sorry, not approval, it's for-
No, this is just for discussion.
Oh, okay. I thought we were, I thought we were going to do it, I thought we were going to do a tentative, that they approve of the tentative.
You approve it bad.
You're right, right. So this, this discussion-
This discussion.
This, this discussion to make sure you guys are aware of that. So we don't, don't, then you vote. You're, the next vote, you're right, is, and the budget have laid, has laid on the table for thirty days, then you have the hearing and then, and then you have the vote. So this was just an explanation of what's, what the changes are. There shouldn't be anything else unless you guys find something or you have a question as to why, why, what's this liquor bill or whatever it is. Then you want to call Paul or call me if it's, if you think it's Paul that's putting that in the budget.
We'll, we'll go through it again as well. I mean, I don't see if there's going to be any change during discussion tonight, but we'll go through it again, looking at that from back to the very beginning, what we did with the spreadsheet as far as where we started, where we ended up and the reasons why we did it.
Right. I mean, that's going to be, that's going to be the big thing at the next meeting.
I put the department, the road department in here, too. There hasn't been any comment or changes on those from the very beginning. So that's really a simple one. And it's the sewer, which is the last one on the, in the town fund budget.
Yeah, and the sewer, if your members pay as you go, that's.
Yeah.
And the road and bridge, even though it's, it's under the supervisor and the board now, nonetheless, we still have a levy because we still have responsibilities for sections of any corporate road. We outsource the snow plowing, we outsource the brush pickup, we outsource the maintenance on the roads. And we have a, a field rep, Artner Dowski, that drives periodically, well, supposedly once a week drives the area, makes sure everything's fine, makes sure that maybe does a little cold patching. He plows our, our parking lot with our snow. And so that's basically what the, what it is. And they also, we also, they are, the levy's also important because they need to pay us back for the money we lent them for major street repairs that they did a couple of years ago.
So it's a, it's not a township levy, it's a?
It's a township levy, yeah. It's a township levy. So they levy the money and then we have, for instance, in this case, we lent them money because they didn't have enough reserves. We lent them money to complete the, the major maintenance, road maintenance, so they're paying us that back. So we can't, we can't stop the levy and not have a budget for them because we still have responsibilities that we need to cover, if we need to cover for them. So as long as, as long as there, there are significant expenses, debt or expenses associated with it, we will continue the levy. At some point, if it becomes very minor, let's say all our incorporated roads are gone and all we have is, is brush pickup or whatever it is, then probably we'll do away with it and it will just fall under town. And we'll just, the little bit we have left to do there, we'll do under the town levy. But for now, it's still significant enough where we should need to, we should have a levy and, and a, and a budget, a separate budget specifically for it. Do you understand that? No?
Well, if that taxing body no longer exists.
Yeah, it, the, what it is, is you have, you have three, three lev-, well, we have three, three levies and three budgets. Some have, some have others, some have multiple. They'll break out multiple things. We just do on under three. We did a road and bridge, we did GNA and we did town. Even though that commissioner is gone and even though the, that department, the infrastructure of that department is gone, nonetheless, those functions still remain and those functions are, are funded by that, by that levy still and then managed by the budget. It's just, it's not being run by the highway department anymore. Individually, it's a separate body. It's now being run by the board and the supervisor as part of town, but it has a separate budget still.
Understand.
As, as does general assistance.
Yeah, as general assistance technically is under town, I manage it, but there's a separate levy for that, too. So the only one that, and even, well, yeah, and the assessor's under town but doesn't have a separate levy. It's, it's weird. I mean, when you think about it, administratively how we're structured versus the levy and the budget.
Right.
Don't, aren't in sync.
Right.
Administratively, we're, where we are assessor's office, the town, which includes GE, I mean GA and EA, and then the road and bridge. But levy-wise, we're road and bridge, town and GA, GNA, or GNE, well, GA and EA. And the assessor's under town, even though it's a separate administrative department.
It has its own budget.
Pardon? Yeah, it has, yeah.
Assessor has its own budget.
Has its own budget within the town budget. Yeah, it doesn't have a separate budget, it's within the town budget. So if we, when we go, the assessor administratively is separate and the assessor herself, I only have limited authority over in terms of her budget or we only have her budget and her, and her levy, or basically a levy and her budget. And then I have some power over her in terms of general administrative things for the, for the building. But in terms of how she runs her department, she's on her own and that's her department. Yet her budget is put together by us. The road commissioner didn't have that. He had his own budget and his own responsibility. So who designed this?
County.
I don't know, some state representative, I don't know, put this, or some state rep staff, you know, whatever it was. So it doesn't really flow and, and I got, I don't know if, I'll have to, maybe I'll, Paul sends you the, Paul sends you the PowerPoint, since you're new, the PowerPoint presentation that sort of outlines how the township, how that, what I, the presentation I give and how it works.
That'd be great.
Is this the legal one?
Do you want me to do the real in-depth one? I have to do one for a legal, for a legal class. I'll send you that one.
Yeah, that'd be great.
All right, send him that one.
If he's an attorney, he'll send it.
Yeah, he's attorney. He may be able to figure it out. I don't know.
I don't know, we'll see.
It's for law school students, not for the guys that actually have become lawyers and have forgotten everything already.
Right.
So, okay, yeah, so that's, that's why, that's why these levies don't necessarily match up and budgets don't match up with us administratively, but there's still, there still is a reason for it. Though, and like I said, the, at some point, we may do away with, we may stop the levy, but that would only be after we get to a point where our expenses for road bridge are so small that we can just include it under the town and can pay for it out of the town fund. Okay? We have already had a first and second on this, didn't we?
We didn't do that one.
No, can we get a first and second?
Wait, this is just-
No, we don't need to.
Oh, we don't, I'm sorry, you're right. I'm slipping here. Yeah, so that was just, if there's no other questions in that, like I said, you will have the hearing, probably not much discussed at that, and then you'll have the, then you'll, you'll have the regular presentation and Paul and Dick will go through it, maybe not line-on-by-line-on, but pretty specifically. So if there's any questions, they'll be addressed then. But I really recommend you read it, read it clearly ahead of time.
Yeah.
This is your, one of your primary responsibilities. Okay, that is the budget, that is, that is everything here. I'll give you one or two things on the side. One, they should begin, I think I said, the building, the work on the, the bathroom and the bike safety spaces next week, and then that should begin the process that we need to complete this capital expenditure program. Also, at, at this, at this point, we have instituted a checklist. When people are checking in, being vetted initially for the food pantry or, or come in to meet with our caseworkers on the social services side or come in for counseling, they, we have a checklist, or a list now. It says, here are, here are other services, are any of these you're interested in, and they can then check it off and send it, and then send it to that department with information for them to contact them. We also have always been doing referrals, but we wanted to put something in place that's a little bit more structured so that, first of all, so that that person, if they want to tell us, yeah, I need this or that, they, they, they can. Also, so that individual stays alert to questions, that issues that may arise, that then they could potentially talk to that person about and refer them. We just want to stay focused on that holistic approach. Once again, we're trying to get not to just why they're going to the food pantry, not just that they're going to the food pantry, but why they're going to the food pantry and how we can address that. So that checklist was, was, is, is in place now. And let me think, is there anything else at this particular time that you guys really need to know? Is there anything else, Paul, that you think is informative?
This is all the stuff we added.
Yeah, yeah. Remediation, we're, we've submitted for the, no further remediation required with the SRB. We're waiting to hear back from them. I think we'll get approval, just a question of how quickly it goes through. And, and we've, you know, the, I, I, I think the staff at the staff meeting that we had the, in, in January, after the party, we had a staff lunch meeting for a state of the township. I always kind of talk about where we are and what we're doing. I think I was really excited about the, the sense of ownership and the sense of, of really feeling good about their job and what we're doing. And I think that's important in order for them to do a good job, is to feel good about themselves and their, and what they're doing, too. So I'm, I'm excited about that. The other things that I did highlight, I've been highlighting to the department head is that the three key things are holistic cooperation among ourselves, but also with other government bodies, do more cooperative, and then make ourselves more well-known. That we may need to make people aware of what we're doing and how we're doing it. So we want to do a holistic approach, we get at the problems, we want to be, we want to be, we want to be in cooperation, not only advantage for the taxpayer, but also a one plus one equals three maybe then with agencies and other government bodies. And so we're talking about holding joint meetings, we're talking about the EGTC, the Elk Grove Township Agency Collaborative Group that we, we host twice a year. Those are things that we want to coordinate there and then making sure people know about us or being communicative, that we get out that information out there. And that's things like, you know, us holding community days or us doing shredding or you guys going to events or parades or market day or, you know, stuff like being at the VF, maybe doing a presentation to the League of Women Voters or whatever. Those are things that we need to highlight so that people are aware of what we're doing and take advantage of what we provide because that's, that's what our, our job is. Okay, I don't have any, you have guys any questions for me?
No.
Okay, no? Okay, if there's nothing else, do I have a motion to adjourn?